...of June 6, 2016 to order. And if you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to our decisions and to the state for which it stands. To the beautiful Minnesota, united by a virtues deal, where equal opportunity and justice for all are revealed.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Members Sherper?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Wolfisle?
Here.
Minehart?
Here.
Mayor Falcone?
Here.
At this time, if we could have an approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call?
House Member Bowman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for the first public comment. We do ask that if you come up to comment, that you do limit your time to three minutes. And please say your name, and then also write your name and your address for the city clerk. Thank you.
Douglas W. Melama, 688 Holly, Cadillac, Michigan. I'm sure this is part of my three minutes, but we'll go. I'd like to talk about Mr. Richardson's lawsuit. First of all, I want to qualify that is Mr. Richardson and other citizens were saying if they have a problem by the mayor, take us to court. Well, Mr. Richardson did. It was categorized by the attorney and by other people here that it was a frivolous lawsuit. Frivious, didn't have any meeting. First of all, I know that as a council member at the time, we were not approving the minutes of our closed session. We were not doing that. That's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. That was part of what Mr. Richardson's suit was. So we're in not in compliance. Second thing is, is that according to the charter, anything over $7,500 must be approved by council. That lawsuit that Mr. Richardson had, to defend it, the city never went to council and voted approval of that suit. That is a charter violation. So we say it's meaningless. First of all, the lawsuit, the cost. Twenty-four thousand. Find an attorney and ask him, that typical case, how much it would cost. The costs were inflated. That's my opinion. And I'll stand on that, and I have talked to several other local attorneys. The thing is, is that Mr. Richardson's lawyer was asked to pay for those fees. It was determined by Mr. Richardson's attorney, Mr. Green, that he wasn't solvent. He's not solvent today. Things have not changed. So now we're going to take him to court, we're going to spend more money to find out that he's not. Let's talk about the true motive. The true motive by several of the council members is to get the cart. Get the hot dog cart because therefore you eliminate Mr. Richardson from the park, and therefore you don't have to contend with the cart. The cart legally, and I'm a board member of that group, is in their name, a nonprofit organization. And yes, Mr. Petcha, it is out of Chicago, and it is a branch, which is perfectly, we got all the documentation to that. So first of all, let's talk about the motive. That is to get his cart. And the other motive is no more than bullying and political harassment because of his political stance with the former governor, with the former mayor.
Mr. Melama?
Thank you. I know my three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Hi, Sue Melama. I only want to talk to you about the notice that is in the newspaper. I looked at two different day's copies, and the notice was on page three up at the top, and it's where they notify all kinds of different meetings that are taking place. When, in both issues that I looked at, when they talked about the agenda, they notified public of when and where to meet for this meeting, but under agenda, it says TBA, to be announced. Now, when I got here, I really expected a very, very short agenda because as of a day ago, you didn't know what your agenda would be. And yet, when I arrived, it's three pages. So I just, you know, it would seem to me that you would know some of the items for the agenda when you print it in the newspaper. And as a citizen, I would just appreciate if you would notify the newspapers so that they can let the public know what items are going to be on the agenda. Thank you.
Brian Chapman, 8770 and 115 Cadillac. I'm here representing the Cadillac Freedom Festival tonight. We're on the agenda for approval for some of our permits, as evidenced by the two respected residents that spoke just before me. Oftentimes, many things that come before this council and go across this podium in particular are very heated and heavy and important issues, but every once in a while, it's nice to come up here and talk about something fun. It's been six years now that Gabby and I have been instrumental in presenting the Cadillac Freedom Festival to the city, the residents, and people who choose to visit here. We'd just like to thank council for their continued support over the years. We look forward to continuing to work with council and city staff and services to continue to make Cadillac a place where people enjoy coming and spending their time. And it's kind of related, it's a little bit off agenda, but it gives me the opportunity, because it's related to Freedom Festival, just to say, regardless of everything that's been said, rumors and misinformation and whatnot, for a group of individuals who do events like the Freedom Festival and some of the other events that are going on in this community that make it such a great place to live and to visit, I for one just want to say that the improvements that are going on downtown in the park in particular and on the lakefront are welcome and needed. The socio-economic impact of events such as these to the city cannot be quantified. It's too difficult to put a number to what these events mean to this community in general. And once again, I just want to thank council, city and services for their continued support. Thank you.
I'm going to follow him. The good stuff. Doreen Lance, Cadillac Rotary Club, I'm the president this year, and we just want to thank you so much for the work at the pavilion. We had three auctions to help pay for that or contribute to it, and it's just beautiful, and I just wanted everybody to know how thankful we are. You guys did a great job. And I don't have my glasses on. Do I write my name? So, thank you so much for what you've done down there and your hard work.
Good evening, Michelle Hoydinga. I live at 226 Robert Street, Manton, Michigan. I'm also the City of Manton Mayor, and I just wanted to come in. I'm a little worse for wear today. I have been out in the rain campaigning, but I just wanted to say hi and let you guys know that I am running for the 102nd State House of Representatives. Bill Potvin is no longer, he's term limited. And I know one of the priorities for municipalities is the revenue sharing, and I know Marcus has been working within Michigan Municipal League. And as a legislator, that is one of my top three priorities, is to keep our local tax dollars local so that we can fix our infrastructure. And that is a huge priority of mine in Manton, so I would love to have your support.
Thank you.
I hope we can continue the positive stuff going forward. Folks, good afternoon or good evening. My name is Jason Elmore. As many of you all know me, I am an attorney at the law firm, McCurdy, Wotill, and Portius, which I know sometimes even saying the name of our firm in this building can be a bit mixed, but that's all right. I'm very proud of my firm. I work with some very good people. And I can also say, by the way, with all those cases that brought all of Rettie's attention, I never worked on any of those cases, so I'm clean. But anyways, let me tell you why I'm here. I'm here because I'm running for Westford County Prosecutor again. Last time I ran, four years ago, I lost by five votes, but I'm back for a couple reasons. Number one is I'm back, and this is the most important, because this is a job I've always wanted. This is the job, the reason why I became an attorney. And some people say, well, how come you haven't been a prosecutor before? Well, I have been, actually. I spent the first half of my career in the military, haven't been a prosecutor, not only here across the United States, but also overseas. Even in fact, since I last ran, I even, after the last campaign, I deployed overseas for a year and continued prosecuting. This is a job, again, that I want. What is my, what do I think separates me? Number one is my breadth of experience. I don't take away anything negative, I'm sorry, I don't say anything negative about an opponent or anything else like that. What I do is I try to accentuate what I think are some of our differences in a positive way. My practice hasn't been largely limited just here to Westford County, which I don't discredit anybody who does, but my practice brings me a breadth of experience from not only here, but across much of northern lower Michigan. I practice in 10 to 12 counties every single year. And I'm also a prosecutor and defense attorney, not only here, but also, like I said, in the military around the world. Now, why do I think that's important? Because that lends me a breadth of experience in how to do things in a different way. Instead of doing things in the same way all the time, I see what works in other counties, what doesn't work in other counties, and I can apply that here in our particular county. Lastly, I'm going to say, here's how I approach everything. I tell people that this is not a job, this is about a mission. I intend to leave my private practice if I'm elected. And I think that's important. Why is it important that I leave my private practice? Number one, focusing my time. And number two, because I think potential conflicts of interest are important. For instance, justice demands the appearance of justice. I don't think it's appropriate or I don't think it's fair if I'm out maybe representing somebody doing a will or maybe doing a divorce for somebody and say, well, that's not criminal, I'm going to go over here and be a prosecutor. Well, what happens if I represent somebody in a divorce? I represent somebody in a real estate issue. But then somewhere down the road, that person or their close loved one is somehow involved in a case, maybe a potential victim. And if I don't make a decision they don't like, does it look like I have a conflict of interest? That's one of the things that drives my focus and mission here. So I do thank you for your time. If you all ever have any questions, please feel free to email me and/or give me a call on my cellphone. I'm not at the office next these days. Was I under three minutes?
Yep.
Good.
Nice fast talking.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else to approve public comment, I move on to the consent agenda. In this evening, we have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on May 16, along with the minutes from the closed session that was held on May 16. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Wolfisle?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, and we have several communications this evening, Sandy.
Yes, the first request is from the Cadillac Fire Department for the closure of Lester Street between Cobb and Hobart on June 7, from 6:45 PM to 10:00 PM for hazmat drill. They look familiar, it came to council earlier, but they were not able to hold that drill. It had been canceled, so this is basically a reschedule.
I have a question. When is Cobb Street scheduled to be closed for construction?
After June 6. It won't start till after June 6, for sure. Which is today, by the way.
I don't think Lester and Cobb should be closed at the same time.
Is it because of concern during the construction cycle?
Well, I was thinking, because, well, maybe I'm wrong.
Oak Street runs into the hospital, Lester runs behind the hospital.
They'd have a dead end anyway there if it was closed, wouldn't they? Never mind, okay. Yeah, I was thinking it would just really restrict the flow of traffic to the hospital.
They would be coming in on Oak Street.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Cadillac Fire Department for the closure of Lester Street between Cobb and Hobart on June 7, from 6:45 PM to 10:00 PM for their hazmat drill. Support.
I should have done it too. We could all set it together.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Minehart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is to approve the closure of Lake Street Parking, the Lake Street Parking Lot on June 11, 2016, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the Sons of Amvets Car Show.
Do we have somebody here from the organization? Would you like to say anything?
Yes.
This is his first time, so I'm kind of showing him the ropes here, so I don't always have to come to this. Right. So what we'd like to do-
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for letting me speak tonight.
Thanks for letting me speak tonight, and also Matt.
And what is your name?
Chris Hansen. And I'm the commander of the Sons. I am the commander of the Sons. Kind of a new job for me, so bear with me a little bit, please. What we've been trying to do is bring a bunch more people into the establishment on top of people into Cadillac. And with this car show, what we're doing is a pig roast and a car show combined, and all the proceeds are going to go to the Works Warriors for Special Olympics. So what we'd like to do is, along with Michigan Artisan and Farm Market, they're going to be right there in the parking lot with us. We're splitting up our parking lot for that. And what we'd like to do is, we think we're going to have an issue with space right now, so we would like to have that parking lot to accommodate everybody. The additional parking lot there on-
We tried to set up in the one right next to the Amvets, but you want the other one in case-
Correct, right. The one that's right next to the bathrooms there. The way it's going with our registrations and whatnot, it looks like we're going to need the extra room, which is good or bad, I guess, depending on how you look at it.
We're good on that side.
You're good? Okay. So where will people park?
Across the street.
Well, we'll have the parking lot on the other side of our building, as well in the road, and then the parking lot on the other side of the old-
Behind the movie theater?
Yes, yes. The old Councilman and I AG building and whatnot, in there.
Good. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of the Lake Street Parking Lot on June 11, 2016, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the Sons of Amvets Car Show, Pig Roast, and All Around Good Time.
Second.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Members Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next request is to approve the display of a banner from June 20 to July 5. Approve the parade route from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM on July 4. Approve the closure of Lake Street from Harris to Cass, the closure of the Farmer's Market Parking Lot, and the closure of the parking spaces on the south side of Harris Street from 5:00 PM, June 30 to 5:00 PM, July 4, for the Freedom Festival.
Okay, and I know Gabby's here from the Freedom Festival. Are there any new things coming up this year that-
New things? We're always adding new things.
I know you are.
I'm, good evening, Mayor Falcone and the members of the City Council. My name is Gabby Chapman, and I have proudly represented the Cadillac Freedom Festival as their organizer for just over four years now. In that four years, the festival has grown from a one-day festival to a multiple-day festival. And new this year, we always have entertainment sometime throughout the weekend, but we have entertainment every day of the festival, from like noon until evening. Through some partnerships with Rotary and other organizations, we're able to do that this year. Again, for the second year, we are going to have the Kids Carnival. The carnival did so well last year that they are coming free. Woo-hoo! And again, this year, we're going to do the Pork in the Park competition. If you didn't get down there last year, I would strongly recommend you do. We went through 420 pounds of ribs in two hours, so it was obviously a success. But, you know, it's not all about me. I have a wonderful committee that I work with, and I couldn't do what I do without their dedication and hard work. So I just want to take a minute. They can stand up, but Mike Stump, he runs a disc golf tournament. Derek Anderson runs the Pork in the Park competition and also does most of the vendor setup. Steve Birdwell is with the Amvets and the Honor Guard, and they take care of our beverage garden for us. And the Fire on the Water Military Tribune. And I must say, in the years that I have been the organizer of this event, we have never had any legal issues with our beverage garden, and I'm very proud of that fact. And then we have Brian Chapman, who has the Thunder on the Lake Shore Motorcycle Show. Last year, we had people here from three different states and had over 60 motorcycles. In the first year that he did that, we had like 30. So it's growing, and I mean, we've gone from modern motorcycles to 80 and $100,000 motorcycles on display, so it's pretty cool. So the only thing that I see on here that maybe needs to be amended, I know Anthony from the Fire Department is working with, hi, is working with American Fireworks. We have chosen or have selected to go with a new fireworks company this year to see if they will follow through on their bid to provide us a better show for our money than we've had in the past few years. So that's new this year. We're going with a new-
You're still raising money for the fireworks?
We are still raising money for the fireworks. I feel bad because everybody thinks that their taxes pay for fireworks, and we know that's not the case, and it is very difficult to raise money for the fireworks. So if the city would like to donate, or the DDA, we would gladly accept that.
That's not why I asked.
I know that. I know that.
Take personal tax, too.
You know, we came up with a fundraising strategy this year that if we could get 400 individuals in town to donate $50, that would give us $20,000 revenue, where we could put all of that money into the fireworks. And I can honestly say that is probably the largest fireworks display that the City of Cadillac has had or would have in many, many years. So, you know, so spread the word. You know, you can find information on the Visitors Bureau website. Cadillac Freedom Festival now has their own Facebook page. The information's there. All the donations are tax deductible, and if they give a $50 donation, they get their name entered into a drawing, and we're giving away a 40-inch TV. So it's well worth 50 bucks, in my opinion. Anyway, as I was saying, the only amendment I think may need to be made to my request would be Chestnut Street is not on here for the fireworks on Sunday, July 3. So I would need Chestnut Street from Lake to the school closed for the firework display. But I didn't know if that came from you or if I had to include that in my stuff. So I apologize if it was an oversight on my part. Oh, okay. I apologize.
Members of council-
We usually go Lake to Linden.
It'd be Lake to Linden.
Lake to Linden.
To make it easier, we have in the request and motion to grant the authority for staff to make changes for closures as needed, which this could be as well.
Okay. We'll put it into that.
Perfect. Okay. I apologize for the oversight on my part.
You caught it.
So other than that, I would just ask that you approve this request and that you come out and enjoy the Freedom Festival and all the events that are going to take place. There's also, if you have children from the ages of like five to 14, or 16, excuse me, one of the former board members for the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau and a former business owner in town, Mike Townsend, fought a brave battle against cancer and unfortunately lost. And I'm partnering with his family, and for the second year, we're doing Mike Townsend Kids Memorial Fishing Tournament out at the Carlton Johnson, and it's pretty cool. Last year, we had like 25 kids, and everybody got a participation ribbon because they're all special, and it took a while for them to get up at 7:00 in the morning to go fishing. And so, anyway, that's all I have to say, and-
I just have one last-
Oh, and we have a Freedom 5K this year is new.
Oh, great.
So-
Ann Bush is putting that on.
Ann Bush is putting it on.
One last thing that I have is there are going to be more ribs this year.
Yes.
700 pounds, but just up already.
Yeah, because a lot of people got there too late and were very disappointed.
But, you know, it-
But they worked.
They worked good. But I must say, it worked to the committee's benefit that we ran out of ribs because we had businesses, local businesses, come and say, I want to be a part of this, and I will give you this much money because I want ribs, because I came down and there was none. So it's like, best of both words. Yeah, I didn't get any either, so. Anyway, that's all I have. Any other questions? Okay.
Nice. Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
We don't need to amend anything, then, on-
It's already on there.
Yeah, it's on there. I would, you could simply-
Oh, okay.
The motion to approve is presented, including granting the city manager or designee the authority to disclose this as necessary.
I'll just go through it. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from June 20 to July 5, 2016. Approve the parade route from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM on July 4. Approve the closure of Lake Street from Harris to Cass, closure of Farmer's Market Parking Lot, and closure of the parking spaces on the south side of Harris Street from 5:00 PM- PM, uh, June 30th to 5:00 PM July 4th, uh, for the Freedom Festival. And grant the city manager or his designee with the authority to adjust closures as deemed necessary. I need to practice my reading.
Support. Great.
Danny, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Schipper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Sherry, did you have something inside? I sort of heard you...
That's okay, it's a question, and it's only somewhat related. Um, what is the projected completion date of the project that's going on right now on Alk Avenue Commons?
We're expecting...
Splash pad parking lot?
Yes, the whole, the whole back area there.
Is it still going to be under construction during this time?
It will be, but we're expecting to have a base layer of asphalt, uh, in place to bring back some of the significant parking areas by that weekend. So right now, there's a tremendous amount of underground work going on currently. Once that's done, it won't take long for the equipment to, to get on site to put down the asphalt and the curbing. And it's expected that by, by that holiday weekend, there'll be a base layer that will be suitable for the parking of cars, yeah.
And then, um...
But it won't be until later this summer or fall that the plaza is going to be done.
So it won't be done in time for the art festival?
Was there an issue with, um, splash pad and that? I heard there was something, an issue with the drainage.
Not, not that I've heard.
Yeah, that's, I've heard lots of rumors about that, and I didn't know. And I wonder...
And I haven't heard anything, but...
Can we, can we table that till good of the order, and then we'll talk about that in a little bit?
All right.
So maybe we can get an update on the project.
Okay, great. And then one last communication.
Yes, I have a request to display a banner from July 5th to July 18th for the Art Festival.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from July 5th to the 18th for the Art Festival.
Support.
Danny, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Schipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, we have a couple of appointments.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Rick Cushman to the Corridor Improvement Authority Cadillac West Resort area for a four-year term to expire on June 3rd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Rick Cushman to the Corridor Improvement Authority Cadillac West Resort area for a four-year term to expire on June 3rd, 2020.
Support.
Danny, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Minehart?
Yes.
Schipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Reagan O'Neil to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on May 19th, 2019.
Now, I have to say, look at the date that he was originally appointed.
Yeah.
1997.
Motion to reappoint Reagan O'Neil to the Brownfield Development Authority for a three-year term.
Support.
Danny, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Schipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Schipper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, and that moves us to the city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, this, uh, request is to send Lieutenant Bob Keith of our fire department to Task Force TIPS. Uh, it's a company that makes fire nozzles out of Indiana. Uh, they've offered to provide him along with presumably other firemen from around the Midwest to take a factory tour. Uh, it's a potential vendor of the city. It'd be a good, a good opportunity for him to see the, the greatest and the latest. Uh, it's an all-expenses-paid tour of that facility. Um, obviously, the city still pays for our own labor costs, which is customary, uh, and I'm here to recommend the council approve the out-of-state travel request.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the out-of-state terror, travel request from the fire department as presented.
Support.
Danny, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Schipper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries.
Um, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This next item, uh, was discussed, I think, in brief at your last meeting. It was an inquiry regarding the Marble Street demolition, and we are before you this evening with the bid that was received late last week. Uh, we are recommending, uh, Byerlean Companies, Inc., in an amount of $27,956. That was their, uh, that was their bid. Uh, they were the lowest bid. The next bid, uh, we only had two, was, was at $43,400. Um, there's, um, although the, the structure itself, if you haven't seen it, I would encourage you to see it, uh, doesn't look like much of anything. It's unfortunately full of contaminated materials, and that's why it's going to be some expense for us to, um, for us to take it down. Um, so the, the recommendation this evening is that we award the bid to Byerlean Companies, Inc., in the amount of $27,956. Uh, grant funds will cover $21,725 of those costs, and the city will be responsible for the remaining $5,871. Our fire marshal is here, uh, who's been responsible, uh, along with, is John Wallace here, too? Uh, yep, uh, those are the two folks that, uh, put together the grant package, uh, and responsible for, uh, this project, so if there's any specific questions that...
I have a, I have a question.
Yep.
Um, with the cost to the city being $5,871, does that expense ever go back to the property owner?
Well, it, it gets leaned on the property. Whether or not the owner or a future owner ever pays it, I, I couldn't tell you. It probably will depend as to what happens to that property, how it ever transfers, does it get foreclosed on, does it not? Is it discharged by the court? Those are things that are yet to be, yet to be known. But it's, it's not something that I think the city should look at banking on. They're going to cover those costs.
It's just the first time I've been to this, so I wanted to...
Well, this is one of those situations where you hate to spend money on something like this, but it is so wonderful that we have a grant to cover a large portion of it. I mean, when does that come along?
Yeah.
And as I mentioned at our last meeting, Cadillac was one of 19 communities statewide.
Eighteen, that's a lot, this is great.
It's a big, it's a big thing, yep.
Good. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to award the contract for the demolition of 303 Marble Street to Byerlean, is that how you say it?
Uh, that's how I'm saying it. I may not be right.
Or Beerlean or whatever, Beerlean? Beerlean Companies, Inc., in the amount of $27,956. Grant funds will cover $21,725, or 79% of the cost, and the city will be responsible for $5,871 or 21% of the cost. Support.
Danny, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Schipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this next item is the Cadillac Junction Development Agreement in Draft. Uh, the city attorney passed out a copy this evening, uh, so there should be one available at everybody's desk. I'm going to ask Mike to take over with the presentation. Just wanted to note, we have been working very diligently with, uh, the Terry D. Company in the development of this draft agreement. Uh, we do believe that we're very close to, uh, being able to, uh, to finalize it, and this evening, we are requesting, uh, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign off on the agreement pursuant to acceptance by the city attorney. Mike?
So what you have in front of you is a draft. There are some elements of this draft that still need to be worked out, particularly, um, well, let me take a step back. The development agreement is, um, really intended as a vehicle to sort of solidify the sketch plan in terms of written documents that then is binding on all of the properties. So you may recall the sketch plan is approved by the city council. Final site plans have to be consistent with that sketch plan, all of which will be consistent with the development agreement as well. Outlining six things is the sidewalks, the landscape plan, um, including those, uh, trees and landscapes, uh, that were offered by the developers to neighboring property owners for buffering. Um, utility plans still need to be worked out. Now, a lot of these sites are going to be done on a case-by-case basis, so we have a sketch plan that sort of governs the substantial components of the site generally. And then for each individual site, like the J&amp;H Oil site is a perfect example, those sites then will be considered as the development continues to develop in phases, if you will. So that each site, um, may have an impact on the adjacent site, not only about what can be constructed there, uh, but also about how it moves in through site plan approval through the planning commission, and then again at the city council for each individual site plan for each individual site. So even though there's a general sketch plan, they may be tweaked somewhat a little as individual site plans get approved, but of course, those all come back to both the planning commission and the city council for approval. And so the important part is to make sure that those individual sites are cohesive with the overall development, which is dictated by the sketch plan. So the reason why I gave you a draft, um, form is because it hits on those big elements like infrastructure, roads, um, sidewalks, landscaping, detention, retention, uh, lighting, and all of those, um, what I'll call, um, elements of the site that may tend to have an impact on both the city in terms of the infrastructure as well as off-site mitigating those potential negative adverse impacts like stormwater drainage and lighting. So all of that will come back through for each individual site. Um, so the J&amp;H Oil site has already received final site plan approval. Uh, the landscape plan has not yet been approved for the buffer, but it is going through that process now. Um, so we have a landscape plan that's being reviewed by the city and will likely be reviewed by the planning commission as well. And then for each individual application beyond J&amp;H Oil, uh, there will be an application to the planning commission, uh, which then will necessitate constructing the road further to the city's ex, the detention-retention basin, extension of utilities, and all of those things that go into the development. But I didn't want to, and, you know, council obviously can weigh in on this, what I wanted to do is give you a draft, uh, but what I'm hoping for is to get the, uh, authorization from council to allow the mayor and the clerk to sign that agreement when both the city manager and the city attorney have approved that final draft form. Because like I said, we still have a couple elements to work out, um, between how the, uh, detention-retention basins are owned. So for example, the city is going to take, um, ownership of those, also ownership of the roadways, and those require, um, legal descriptions in terms of the fee simple interest. That will likely be an ongoing process, so at the start, the city will have a fee interest in the road up to a certain point, and then as other sites are developed, particularly towards the south, that roadway will be extended and fee ownership granted back to the city for each of those segments as they occur. But it's sort of, if you think about this development as a development in phases, each phase may be individual sites or maybe one or two at a time. The whole point of that, allowing to do it in phases, is that at each step along the way, this development will stand on its own, even if more sites are not developed in, in the future as well. So if for some reason the development were to be defunct, say, that what's already constructed out there would, would be able to, to stand on its own without necessarily the future expanded area. Any questions about the...
So the two things you said you were still working on is the, the retention basin and the road?
Yeah, so there are several, um, there are several things that, that will have to be worked out. Some of those, um, we, I think, got those, we had worked out at the end of last week. Um, so we, we were talking about the extension of utilities and how that's going to work. Um, the developers are going to pay for those extension of utilities, um, but particularly upfront, we're only dealing really with one site, and so even though it'll be sized appropriately for the entire site coming up to that one site, not all of those utility, uh, infrastructure will be put in at this time further to the south because it's really not necessary. But as it's extended, the development agreement will provide for the construction of those facilities that the developers cost, plus turning over those infrastructure facilities, including the roads, the detention-retention, uh, water, sewer. Um, all of those elements will then become publicly owned as, as they're constructed and accepted by the city. There are elements of the sketch plan, though, that will remain private, so not all of it will be public infrastructure, particularly those, uh, streets serving the, what I'll call the residential components, the apartments and the senior assisted living. Uh, those are going to remain, um, private, particularly the roads. The infrastructure, the sewer and water, uh, will be public infrastructure, and so we have some details to work out on that, most particularly where it's placed within the right of way, whether it's going to be in the road, outside of the road, so we have to work through some of those details.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Cadillac Junction Development Agreement upon acceptance by the city attorney. And?
And mayor and clerk to sign, uh, by acceptance by city attorney and city manager. Sorry for that.
Okay, so the mayor and the clerk to sign by, uh, uh, upon acceptance by the city attorney and city manager.
Support.
Danny, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Minehart?
Yes.
Schipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Still reading it. Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, then we have the minutes this evening of the Webster County Airport Authority from the meeting held on April 13th, minutes of the Dog Park Advisory Committee held on April 13th, along with the minutes of the zoning board of appeals, uh, held on April, uh, excuse me, October 15th, 2015. At this time, we'll open the floor again for public comment. If you do come forward, we ask that you, uh, stay within the three minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close public comments. And at this time, we have good of the order. Does anyone have anything that they would like to say?
Yep. Uh, just wanted to provide a, a quick update, uh, regarding the projects based on your question earlier. Um, so we are really excited. Things are moving incredibly well. Um, uh, at this point, we did have a little bit of a hiccup, uh, with our utilities, uh, not our utilities department, but the, uh, you know, external utilities, uh, just trying to get all of their different work crews and the different, uh, phasing of their schedules in sync, uh, for the burial, um, of all the utilities that are out there. It's really more than just, you know, more than just electric. It's electric, it's cable, it's phone, and anything else that may, may have been on those lines. And so once that finally happened, uh, it, it really took about two days for the entire demo of the site to occur. Uh, what's happening right now, while it might seem like not a lot is happening, there really is a lot, you just can't see it because it's underground. Uh, so all the infrastructure, uh, is getting laid underground that'll be able to accommodate, uh, the splash pad and, and the fireplace and the various electrical and, and other pieces that are needed to, to make the amenities work. Uh, it's expected that by, uh, by, you know, the Independence Day holiday weekend, there'll be like a base layer of asphalt down, uh, in that parking area. Excuse me, um, the area is still obviously going to be a construction zone, so there isn't going to be, uh, the maximum amount of parking available, at least I don't believe there will be, but there will at least be some parking available there, uh, that weekend, whereas for this past weekend where we hosted Back to the Bricks, there was... weekend, where we hosted Back to the Bricks, there was no parking at all. So, something is going to definitely be better than nothing. At the same time that that's happening, there is going to be some activity on the Forbes Building. We're expecting the asbestos removal from that site to happen, I believe, on the 20th or 21st of this month. And while I don't have a date certain as to when the actual demolition of the building itself will happen, I will, when I do know that, let the council know, in case you want to snap a picture. It is believed that it will be done before July 4th. So, it would... It's really going to be neat to see the progress, at least if there are some folks that happen to come to town for the one event that we just had this past weekend, and then a month later, they're here for, you know, for the next big community-wide special event, there's going to be some noticeable progress that's going to be done in the area. At the same time, on the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion, the lawn areas were hydro-seated about a week ago. As you can see, it's already starting to come up. It does take a couple of weeks for it to really start to come up. That project is about 95%, maybe even more, done. The probably biggest thing that has yet to still get installed are the sun shielding or sun sail devices, but those have been budgeted for, and that will happen. There will also be a date. I know I've spoken with one of you about training the trainer on operating the new sound equipment. It's all state-of-the-art stuff. It's all going to be application-based. You can, you know, we actually received an iPad from the... From our sound vendor. I mean, that's how you work it. So, we're going to make sure that enough people that regularly use it through our groups that they can be hopefully self-sustaining, self-sufficient, you know, out there, so...
Can I ask you something?
Yeah.
Can we have... I know we have that same state-of-the-art equipment for Gopher Wood, and we have someone that, you know, that we hire for our events to do that. Would that be something that... Because what happened with the old sound equipment is it got pretty well battered within a few years because of different people not knowing how to do stuff. Every time you went in, you had to reset and everything.
We would want that person, if they're going to be there, to be part of that.
Yeah. Oh, got it. Never mind. He's there. That's the same one. If you're going... Okay. Good. Good. That's all.
So, who's going to plan the first movie in the park? The Rotary?
The youth council.
Oh, the youth council.
I would think so.
The screen is already installed, as is the projector.
They wanted to do a thing like that in the winter, or remember, they wanted to do a movie? I don't know. I just piped up.
So, there's a couple of vendors where you can acquire a movie to be shown that way with all the proper licensing, and I'd be happy to pass that along.
Yeah.
Well, I just wondered if it should be the Rotary.
It probably should be the Rotary, since it's their thing. I just always pipe up about youth council.
Yep. Pass it on.
I will. The only other remark I was going to make tonight, separate from those projects, is to make sure we invite Jeff Deetland, our utilities director, to the closed session. I did want to remark, I haven't heard that there's a drainage issue with the splash pad. It's possible that it could be...
Yeah, that's... It's all over Facebook and a couple sites.
Careful with Jibberly on the internet.
Well, I was just wondering, you see it out there.
I'll bet. I wonder if it has something to do with the paper reporting that it was sanitary. Put up the... You know, Traverse City had some problems with their splash pad.
Yeah, they had real bad problems.
Yeah, but that's not going to be our issue at all.
You know, I would encourage that, you know, just because it's on Facebook doesn't mean it's true, and I would encourage...
No, but...
If you see those things, you know, encourage people to make a call down to the city and speak with Jeff or with Marcus.
You know, we need a lot of people to know what's going on, so they're for them.
Yeah. Absolutely.
The progress has been pretty exciting to see, though, us all coming together down there. It looks really good.
Thank you.
Sherry?
Yeah. One thing I wanted to mention, when Gabby was talking about the Freedom Festival, the Rotary Club is sponsoring the music on Saturday night, and it's a group out of the, I think it's the southeast Michigan area, called Magic Bus. And this is a group that we've had a lot of people in the community ask us to have here for quite a few years. They're an old hippie, wavy, gravy, droovy kind of 60s, 70s band, so you have to come with your long hair and love beads and teeth signs and tie-dye, you know.
Attitude.
Don't smoke pot, but you get the rest of it, yeah. It's supposed to be a lot of fun, so I want to encourage people to come to that, because I think it's going to be a really nice fun sing-along, and that's Saturday night of that weekend.
And that's from what time to what time?
I don't remember what time it starts. I think 7:00, but I can't say for certain.
Seven to 9:00, I think.
Yeah. That should be a lot of fun. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention, I'm a council... A city representative on the Lake Mitchell Improvement Board. We had a meeting on Saturday, and they... The week before, they treated 70 acres for Eurasian water milfoil on Lake Mitchell, which is, I think it's up a little bit from the year before, but it's not bad compared to what it was in previous years. And one of the challenges is that the milfoil is kind of spotty now, instead of big, large acreage clumps, and so, it's really more difficult to chemically treat when it's in spots like that. And then, the canals, or the coves, Frankie, north and south, and all of the coves and the canal areas were treated earlier, because those usually get filled up quicker, so we have a process of treating those earlier now. I just wanted to give you an update on that, and we'll be monitoring it to see how well that treatment worked. Okay? Thank you.
Can I... I just wanted to thank the folks who organized Back to the Bricks. I brought my two little grandsons down, and the youngest one, Loudon, who just lobs cars, was just beside himself. He was so excited, and everyone was kind and nice and wonderful, and the weather didn't matter, and even when he was shivering, he didn't want to leave, so...
There are a lot of grownups that were that excited about that.
Yeah. It was wonderful to be down there.
Well, maybe next year, we'll get two days of great weather for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
Yes, thank you to the organizer's Joy, and her team did a fantastic job in bringing that event together. So, good. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, if we could have a motion for... To go into closed session?
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Plam Lake Township and hearing Charter Township versus State Bounder Commission, Terry D. LCC, and the City of Cadillac Supreme Court docket 151800, and Richardson versus City of Cadillac, Webster County Circuit Court Case Number 14-25321CZ. The reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on litigation or settlement position of the city, and discuss written confidential legal opinions, and we also would like to invite the utilities director, Jeff Deetland, to join us.
I'll support that.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.